Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. The first thing on our agenda is a public hearing. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and the place for the 2017 high school track, oh excuse me, let me back up. Notice of time and place of the hearing for the 2017 high school track resurfacing project. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on November 15th, 2017. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this subject? And if you do, would you please come up and state your name and...
I recognize a few familiar faces, but many that I don't. My name's Dick Nimmers, 504-5 Nordic Bridge Drive here in Cedar Falls. Thank you for this opportunity to hopefully clarify a few questions that I have regarding this. I'm not here against the track resurfacing, but I have basically about three or four specific questions. The first is the projected longevity of this rebuild. And given the, at least for me, the questionable future of this site, what is the projection, should a new high school be built as far as what's going to be done with this facility? Which leads me to whether this is a wise expenditure of capital at this particular time. If there is a, indeed a question as to that future, a couple of options I'm wondering if have been explored, given that we already partner with U&amp;I for a couple of facilities, softball complex and the new tennis courts. Is there the option of using the U&amp;I track specifically for competitive events? I do know that the current track is used for other uses, gym classes, community usage, people jog and, you know, walk up there and do those kind of things. But it may indeed, and I've walked around that track, it may indeed be not up to the standards we like for competition, but for those other uses, I don't think it's at any more risk than our streets, sidewalks, trails, whatever. And then on a longer term, I guess I've never had this question answered, as far as repurposing the current high school, has a cost analysis ever been done or has it ever been looked at, the possibility of demolishing the current track along with George Hauser and the field and rebuilding that at the existing sportsplex and using that land for a addition to the high school as needed and perhaps parking? So, thank you for this opportunity.
And when you say, sorry, when you say sportsplex, are you actually referring...
Robinson Dresser.
Robertson Dresser, okay.
Robertson Dresser Sportsplex where we currently have the softball and baseball.
Yep, okay.
And I think new locker rooms going in there. So I guess my thought pattern was if there is still existing land, which at one point in time I thought there was, is there a possibility of just putting all our sports there? Kids currently, you know, leave school and they drive back for football practice, many of them. They will be driving to the tennis courts, they drive to baseball and softball, although that is a summer venue. So it seems like that might be a reasonable option if indeed we run into a problem with the school bond whenever that is not passing again, where do we go from here? Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Bart Lane, I'm at 8:15 Washington Street, and I share Dr. Nimmers' thoughts. I'm not here against the track, certainly not. I think it's more the long-range, long-term planning. And have all of the options been explored? And is there a thought process that if a high school referendum is passed, then what do we do with that current high school and that current site? And then conversely, if it doesn't pass, have we thought about how to use that site so that we can continue to deliver the education that we're delivering to our kids now? So it just seems that it's an awful lot of money without a, at least maybe I'm ignorant to a long-term plan that we have, and I certainly would acknowledge that, but it seems to be missing, at least from our, from my view. So I would, not to echo what Dr. Nimmers said, but all those questions I think are pertinent and worth answering before spending this kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we will close this hearing. Do you...
Sure, I would love to be able to address some of those questions. I think it would be important to address those now, and this is something that we've talked about, you know, last board meeting and I think at a previous board meeting. We certainly understand the, number one, the site concerns as we look long-term at sustainability and what a new high school will mean. We know we purchased land jointly with you and I, or in conjunction with you and I for a new high school site. So we understand that the current site where the high school sits and resurfacing the track could be perceived as a short-term vision, but we also understand that it takes a good five years by the time you go through a bond process, by the time you go through all the site development and planning as well as the construction to be able to have a brand-new high school built. The question about longevity, typically a track that is resurfaced is going to last about seven years. The hope would be eight years. We had about, little over seven years for this track with some patching and some other components. So longevity-wise, as we look at the life cycle of the bond, the construction and occupancy of a new high school, we're close to that. We know that there's going to be two years potentially of overlap if the bond is successful within the next year or two years. So that is one of those aspects where we understand that there'll be some people that question that, but we think that that is the best use as we look at resurfacing that track. Was there other options reviewed and looked at? We talked about this quite a bit last time, yes. We looked at, do we surface or build the tracks out at one of our junior highs that are currently cinder tracks? And that was cost prohibitive extensively. We looked at partnering with you and I, but the track seasons are at the same time, they don't have lights, there's a lot of different challenges with that. Do we look at busing kids to another community? Do we look at trying to bus kids to other locations? And that became too cost prohibitive as well. We looked at building a track at the land that we just purchased with you and I, but again, as we looked at grading and how that was going to be configured and the way that that needed to be built out over the course of time with a high school setting there, again, cost prohibitive and it became way too challenging as we looked at the grading and the site layout to try to get that done and then come back and build a high school. And I think the comment about Robinson Dresser, we do not have a lot of land at Robinson Dresser. You know, there's land that is open and available around it that's not developed, that's farmland, but that's not land owned by the school system, and we've not inquired about what that cost would be, so we've not explored that as a, as a cost analysis long-term. I think the, the challenge with that site long-term is the, as you look towards the south, there's a dry-run creek that runs kind of what I would call from the northwest to the southeast, south of the Robinson Dresser sites, so that becomes a little bit challenging as you look at what could you build there, what could you put there without a massive amount of drainage work and other site improvements there at that Robinson Dresser if you continue to move further south. Yes, we know that this is an investment. It's a fairly, as you look at our overall budget and long-term planning within our 10-year budget plan, we had planned, or a pebble plan, we planned for this to happen two years ago. We did some patching three years ago to try to get us through some of these stretches. We know that we are, we pride ourselves on a comprehensive program. We also know that this is used not only by high school and community, but we have a fairly robust Tiger Track Club that's in our community that uses it. We hope that our community uses it more often. So we think it's going to certainly have a very useful lifespan of the next seven years. We have done cost analysis to what we would repurpose the current high school for and tear down the current high school, so there's a lot of different questions that were involved with this. But that was, it's been a very thoughtful process to try to look at how do we, A, provide the necessary programming that we need to have for our students, how do we do that cost-effectively, and then how do we do that as we look at the long-term vision for our district?
Andy, could you also though address, there was a question about the acreage we have at the current high school site, if we even leveled the whole thing. Can you speak to how many acres we have at the current site, what is recommended for a new high school, and maybe even some of the history of that site, having the opportunity to, you know, buy additional acres at that time and then not having done that and the landlocked issue? I think that's important to address again.
Yeah, and that's one of those challenges, that you always look hindsight. When the, when the high school was built roughly, you know, 60-plus years ago, it was constructed on 14 acres, and at the time that was a reasonable amount, in fact, a large amount of acreage. The district had the opportunity to purchase all of the land westward to Hudson Road, and I couldn't tell you now offhand how many acres that was, but that would have brought it up to a sizable amount of acreage. Over time, the, the district has acquired, purchased, obtained additional land, so right now there's about 17 acres on that high school site. The recommended acreage, as we've gone through all of the work as a district and had all of our consultants come in, have said that for a high school you need 40 acres. For roughly every 100 students that attend that high school site, you'd need another roughly one acre. We anticipate having anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 student high school. We did purchase 50 acres, but with the idea that we'd be able to partner with and share a lot of the green spaces with you and I to try to cost share and be as effective as we can, as we look at how do we make sure that we are efficient in all of our services and not redundant in some of those costs. So we felt 50 acres was, was sized appropriately for, A, our community needs, B, our student needs, but also as we looked at how do we make sure that we utilize those resources with another state entity. As we look at other schools across the state of Iowa, Waukees, and I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, but purchased jointly with their city for their second high school, it was over 100 acres, and I don't recall exactly the exact number of acres that they purchased, but they purchased, again, it was over 100 acres. Johnston School District built theirs, and again, I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but again, within that, that range of 50 to 60 acres of land for their new high school that just opened up this fall. So we know that that is the right amount of size. So if we leveled the school and rebuilt on that site, we would still be constrained for any kind of future growth and certainly the components educationally that you need to have in a high school space and a high school land.
And at the current site by you and I, there would potentially be the opportunity, at this point, there's undeveloped land to the west?
West.
West. And actually, and, you know, board members that have been on the board for several years now would remember that we actually considered, you and I, there's about, about 90 acres within that tract of land that we, we purchased the 50 acres to right north of 27th Street. It's on the southern edge of that track though, there's another 30 to, well, really 50 acres just north of that site that goes into the water detention basin right there. So right now that is kind of undesignated land. Certainly it's owned by you and I, but I think there, if need be for, A, green spaces or other joint-use activity spaces, that that would be developed, but potentially if we need some additional land in the future, that could be another option or opportunity. So they've always been a good partner, hence our tennis courts and that shared project. We always try to look and find those efficiencies within our sharing projects because we don't want to be redundant. With a track, it's, that season always occurs at the same time. Anytime you use it for PE and other safety enhancements, we know that it's not ideal necessarily, and I appreciate the comments, but when you look at our PE students and some of the holes and some of the cracks and some of the other aspects, it takes one sprained ankle, one broken leg, one mishap and injury with liability in this day and age, especially when we know that there's some hazards that are there that can create some, some significant challenges and cost ineffectiveness for the school district. So we know that this is something that we would wish we didn't have to do, but it's something that we know that is important to do.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C on the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Public comment? None? Okay. Moving on to the secretary's financial report. Mr. Nesker.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
If we want to pull up the financials for the month of June, there we go, or month of October, excuse me, a little behind myself. If you want to go to the general fund, you can see that we had a revenue of a little over $11 million for the month. October is one of the two big months in the year when we receive half our year's property tax draw, so that's more than normal. And then you can see our expenditures for the month at 4.65 million. So we had an ending fund balance of $8,410,613, and you can see we're running about 1.8 million below where we were at this time a year ago. One thing to note, and you'll note throughout the presentation this evening, that we have changed some investments again, and we've switched in different funds, money to the Collins Community Credit Union, and we were able to basically double our rate of return by doing that.
Hey Doug, just a question on that. I know that half a percentage point is not a lot, but it's double. Should we weigh more, put more money, for example, in Collins if we're getting one versus a half?
We will continue to look for opportunities to improve our investment strategies. We do have a, a limit that the board sets annually for the maximum amount of dollars we can have in an institution, and with Collins we are getting close to that limit. It's not to say that, that we can't change that limit at any time with board approval. We are going to be, we do have some other investments that come due here after the first of the year, and there may be an opportunity that we may need to do that, but we're monitoring that.
Well, you have my full support. If we can, if we can get a better return, you have my full support that we raise the limits.
And I do know that on, you'll see it on next month's report, but the Lincoln Savings Account money market in essence doubled as well starting in November, so you'll see that information next month.
Excellent.
Thank you.
If we want to go to the management fund, you can see a revenue of 277,000. Again, we received a vast majority of our funds as we received one-half of our property tax draw for the year. We actually had a refund, so that's why you see a negative amount in expenditures for the month. And so we ended up with a balance of $719,500, excuse me, $754, and you can see that slightly ahead of where we were at this time a year ago. Moving on to the capital projects fund, revenue for the month of 5,400, and that is just interest on the dollars that we have in. 2.58 million with expenditures in the month of October for the three elementary projects that we're undertaking. And you can see we ended up with a balance of 21,880,000, and you can see where we have the money distributed, and we're again trying to maximize that rate of return that we can stretch those dollars out for those construction projects. Statewide 1-cent local option sales tax, revenue for the month was only $1,682. If you'll recall, last month we received two payments in one month, and for the month of October we did not, so that's just all interest. Expenditures, just under $22,000 for regular expenditures, and then you can see the transfer to Fund 40 for the debt service payment. So we ended up with an ending balance of 7,322,000, and you can see that approximately 6.3 of that is available, although most of that will be used for the upcoming construction, elementary construction projects, and we do have to hold that 995,000 back for the one bond that we have outstanding. Physical plant and equipment levy, revenue of 1.354 million, and again, first half property tax draw expenditures on the various projects that we're doing throughout the district, 100, just under 132,000, ending balance of 3,768,000. And again, you can see that change where we switched for investments to Collins. Debt service, property tax draw this month was 692,000, that's approximately, again, half of the school years, and then that transfer in of that $218,000 from the local option sales tax fund, so we have an ending balance of 1,979,880. That, our first half payment, there are two payments that we make for debt service, the first one's December 1st, so you will see that information on the December financial report. Student activity, pretty calm month as, as October sort of wound down to an end, just under 134,000 for revenue and just under 82,000 for expenditures, 654,000 and change in fund balance, and you can see how that compares very similarly to it did a year ago. Trust and agency accounts, acquired month, little over 13,000 in, just under 12,000 out for a balance of 280,458. Food service, we're starting to get into a groove. October is what I call one of our bellwether months. There's two or three months throughout the year that revenue and expenditures are always pretty consistent over time, and October happens to be one of those, and you can see 232,000 revenue in, 225 out, which is sort of what you want to see, you kind of want to see a balance out, and so we had an ending balance of 607,489. And again, you can see a transfer to a different institution for return on investment on, on our investment accounts. Food service copy, coffee font shop, very little activity as the kids are just now starting to find out about that for this year, and we have an ending balance of 7,551. And in the River Hills Consortium, no activity again this month. You'll start to see that happen here probably in December as first quarter tuition payments start coming due. And with that, I'd entertain any questions from the board?
Any questions for Doug regarding the financial report? Hearing none, if we will put the financial report on file for audit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications, student rep, Arlo, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
So I don't have a ton to report for this time period. We're working on our holiday hoopla event that I talked about previously, maybe it's cold outside. That'll be Thursday, December 21st, I believe, so if you want to, anyone wants to come downtown, we will be maintaining the luminaries throughout the night. We are also working on preparations for a winter dance called the Snowball, which we just got approved, so that'll be a new thing that we're trying out. Hopefully it goes well, the proceeds for that, we're planning on putting towards Dance Marathon. We're also organizing a senate caroling trip to Allen Hospital, which we did for the first time last year, and it was really fun and I think, you know, brought some light to some people, so hopefully we can do that again. One event coming up is members of our senate, as well as our other leadership groups and MVP, are going to hear Kirk Smalley from Stand for the Silent speak at Hawkeye Community College. That's on December 6th. And then in terms of the school as a whole, our dance teams will be competing this Friday at State Dance in Des Moines, and that'll be, there's three groups, hip-hop, palm, and all male are all competing. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have. Are there any questions?
Good. Any questions for Al? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Janelle?
Hello, yeah, if we could go to the slides quick, go, kind of go through our communications update. So first of all, we had, it was very exciting for Allstate Music. We had several students from orchestra band and choir that were chosen to participate in Allstate. The concert was actually broadcast on Iowa Public Television on Thanksgiving evening, if anyone was able to catch it. Extra exciting was William Sims was selected as the only soprano sax soloist that accompanied the choir on a selection, so congratulations to all of those students, very exciting for them. And Arlo, I don't, sure if you maybe mentioned this last time, but the food drive, the combined efforts from the entire district was 51,515 meals donated, which was, I think, well above what the goal was set at.
Yeah.
So that was very exciting, and I think the students did a great job of really involving the entire district in the food drive this year, so congratulations to all of them. This is kind of a fun thing to see, these are fourth graders that are actually going on a Google expedition. They are studying the northeast region of the United States, and unfortunately we, you know, clearly can't ask, offer to travel them there to see anything. So the next best thing is to see this kind of virtual reality that they're able to do with their teachers, so they're able to literally tour some of the great areas of that region and really kind of get a much more, kind of firsthand approach to some of the things they're learning about. The, another amazing thing about our CAPS program is this community that they are developing as a group of students. This year they held their very first CAPS giving, which I think will probably become something the CAPS network embraces as a whole throughout the country. So they got together, all of the strands, and they had a potluck, they did some service projects, and a big shout-out to Ethan Weakman who really leads that program and does a great job of really developing a team within the students and then those instructors that work with them. And it's just been, I've been able to observe especially the education stream a little bit this fall, and it is just amazing what those students are learning and the professional skills are developing, and it's just really fun to see them also have some fun as well. Southdale this year, they've started a culture club, and for one of the first events they had was a Thanksgiving feast, so the students and families shared a meal from foods of the many different cultures that are represented at Southdale. Southdale has quite a bit of representation of different cultures, so it was really great to see, this was something that kind of developed from the students and that they've really taken on as leadership to, to have as a club that's a great addition there at Southdale. And these photos do not do this justice, but the playground opened at Orchard Hill Elementary after a long wait for those kids to get their playground back because of all the construction going on. And you can tell, there's not a lot of faces looking at the camera because they are so busy on all of that new equipment. This was another one of those great partnerships where the district worked with a parent group at Orchard Hill for the funding to be able to provide the playground for those kids. So it is, as you can tell, that literally, they had posted, it felt like a magical holiday at Orchard Hill when they got that playground back. This is another really interesting thing that I think our district food service staff are hosting two taste testings for elementary students and seeking their input and feedback on meal options and choices. And you may be surprised to know that if you ask kids their opinion on something, they will very readily give you their opinion. So, great job of Vicky and all of her staff for being willing to, like, you know, be criticized by some of their youngest customers in some sense. So it's a, they'll be doing it at Lincoln tomorrow, Lincoln Elementary tomorrow as well. And we have a couple congrats we wanted to recognize. Gary Coonan was named the state athletic director of the year. Mr. Coonan is a great asset for us as a district and does a great job of making sure the students in all of the activities are so involved, and he's just a great representative for our district. Another big congrats goes to Coach Johnson, he was named the 5A volleyball coach of the year. Not a huge surprise there, but congratulations to Coach Johnson on an amazing season and the state championship. And then I just have a couple slides of this. So last Wednesday was a professional development day for all of our teachers, and the morning session was broken up by elementary and secondary, and all of the sessions were literally put on by the teachers. So if they had ideas of things they wanted to share that they've been doing in their classrooms, they had the opportunity to then present a session to other teachers. So there's some great posts that they tweeted about that day. They did lots of different things as far as talking about observing each other, peer observation, it's called pineapple-ing, something that, you know, maybe you've heard about, but they had a session on that. They also had a lot of sessions on using digital tools, technology. This one was specifically done by Mr. Welter on assessment. And then, of course, we had a great breakout session that was led by Luke Wagner and Kristen Pease. So those are some really, just kind of overviews of what it really was. The energy that day was amazing, and all of the sessions were amazing, and to just have all the teachers that engaged themselves, you can just really tell that that's something they're going to be bringing into their classrooms for sure. I don't know if Andy or those that are, I mean, it was really impressive if you were able to stop in that day, so. able to stop in that day, so.
You summed it up extremely well, so, and it was a very successful morning. And again, we've said this many times, we have the best staff in the world, and what they put on and their willingness to put on that morning and showcase just the high level of learning that occurs in each of our classrooms was simply tremendous, and I think the feedback that we received showcased that because we had a high turnout from the surveys, and all the surveys showed that it was very beneficial and certainly worthwhile.
Yeah. And then I'll just wrap up here real quick, just so everybody knows, this is all of the social media presence that the district has. And then we also, across our buildings, and then many of our principals in different buildings have Twitter accounts and then also Facebook pages, so this is a great place for just anyone in our community if they want to go and follow and see what's happening at all of our buildings. So, any questions?
So, great summary. We made the front page of the Courier today.
We did, yes, the Rocket Club.
The Rocket Club?
Yes.
Yep. So, can you just tell listeners just what that means?
Sure, Jeff.
Because I don't know.
I read the article five minutes before I came to the meeting.
No, what I can tell you is that our Rocket Club was one of 15 chosen from across the country to participate in a competition with NASA. And one of the interesting things is there's actually a CF alum that works at NASA that saw Cedar Falls High School was part of those chosen, and so there, he's now working with the Rocket Club. They were invited to actually, they were invited to apply to be part of the competition because of how well they did last spring in Washington DC at the competition. So, it's led by Zeb Nicholson, and it's an amazing group, and it'll be really fun to watch the progression that they have until they compete.
And I think tomorrow, once again, they are doing a Skype session with NASA to continue on that dialogue and discussion, so it's going to continue, and certainly an exciting time. And last year was their third year of existence as a Rocket Club at the Cedar Falls High School, and they went to Washington DC and placed fifth nationally. And it is unbelievable, the work that they do, the time they put into it, and just the precision that's required as they launch their rockets, and I couldn't do it justice, but there's a certain height that you have to reach and a certain amount of time, and the rocket has to land back down to earth, and the second launch is a different height with a different time that they don't know what it's going to be, so you have to come back and redesign and redesignate your rocket to make sure it meets those parameters, and it's impressive what they do.
Well, thank you to the Courier for our front page story.
Thank you, Janelle. And sometimes they do practice the Rocket Club on 27th Street in one of the UNI practice fields, so if you follow Zeb at all, sometimes he'll tweet that they're going to be there, and you can go and watch, just drive up and spend the afternoon while they shoot them off. So, anyway, thank you, Janelle. Okay, moving on to G, approval of the 2018-19 SBRC administrative cost by the Leeds Center or Bremwood Consortium.
Okay, I guess that would be me. This is an annual request that we make of the board to give permit, a request to the school budget review committee to allow a certain portion of administrative costs associated with the Leeds Center or the Bremwood Center, that we can charge that against our special education total costs for the, it would be for the 2018-19 school year, so we're basically asking for that one year in advance. It's an annual request, and then we just, that becomes part of our total special education costs for that year.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the school budget review committee in the amount of $12,776 for special education administrative costs associated with the Leeds Center Consortium program for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Jeff, do I have a second?
Second.
Eric can have it. Any questions or comments?
I'm going to recuse myself on this one because I'm employed by Waverly Shaw Raku Staff's Leeds Center, so I don't see any conflict of interest in my part, but just because we're on the same staff, I don't feel it'd be appropriate for me to vote on this action.
Thank you, Jeff.
And again, just as a reminder, that that dollar amount is calculated by the cost of the administrator divided by the number of students, times the number of students an individual school district has, and Cedar Falls had five students at the center at the time of headcount day.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
And how does this compare with last year? My memory's very poor.
It's up from last year.
And any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Item F, excuse me, item H on the agenda is the approval of the 2019-19, is that correct, Doug?
1819.
1819 SBRC administrative costs for the River Hills Consortium.
Again, this is the same situation that we talked about with the previous resolution. This is for students attending our River Hills program, the district has 13 students in the program as of count day, and the request is for $19,634.57. That amount is more than what it was last year, but we also have more students in the program this year than we did as of count day last year.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the school budget review committee in the amount of $19,634.57 for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium program for 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Suzy, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to aye on the agenda, the approval of the dropout prevention modified allowable growth application, tagged teamed by Mr. Conrad and Mr. Nuskar.
I think I'll start with this one, Doug felt that you might need a little break from listening to him talk, so I graciously volunteered to help give this. This is something we do every year, of course, for those of you that have been on the board for a while, every year in December, we are asked to submit an application for modified allowable growth for our dropout prevention programs, and so we will, we do have a PowerPoint, if you can turn that up a little bit. This is actually an application for funding for next year, we are required to do it almost six months or better in advance of next year. So, and again, I'll give you a little bit of background as to what these dollars go for, it is categorical funding that we must earmark for students that meet the qualifications for using these dollars. So, we kind of move through here, am I not running?
You're okay.
Oh, guess it helps if I plug in, huh? So just to give you a little background, you know, the types of students, the types of programming that we are using these dollars for, you can kind of see definitions of those on the, right there, basically it's for students that are returning dropouts, which we do not have very many in our school district fortunately, but then we also need to identify students that may be potential dropouts or meet the qualifications that the state has identified for at risk. And then, in turn for that, then the district creates programs that we can use to help serve those students and keep them on track towards graduation. There have been some changes recently in the funding, beginning in 2016 and 17, we used to be, prior to that date, prior to that year, we would receive separate funding for at risk. It was not a lot of dollars, but it was dollars that also were categorical that we had to account for separately, and in 2016 and 17, they combined those dollars along with the dropout prevention dollars into one application. And then this year, with the changes by the Iowa Legislature, they actually loosened up a little bit some of the rules and regulations as to what you could use these dollars for and the types of students that could be served. And we used to be, had a maximum of 5% of the funding could be used to serve the general population of students, and now they've eliminated that 5%, although as you see in our application this year, we are still around about that 5% that is being served for those students. We have really not changed in the last couple of years, the types of things that we're using these funding, this funding for. Of course, you know, each year, we have to add a little bit to, because of inflation and increased salaries and so forth, so our allocation ends up going up a little bit, but the types of things that we've been funding are listed here, and I'll go through each of those individually for you. If you've got additional questions, when we get to the budget side of it, I'll turn to Doug and have him answer those as well. But we do have our mental health services that we contract through Blackhawk County Mental Health, that provides two counselors, K-12 for our students that have mental health issues during the course of the year, that's a contracted service that we have with them. All of our alternative program funding comes out of these dollars, whether that's salaries and benefits, as well as our online curriculum that we use, not only for the alternative program, but also for our credit recovery program at the high school and junior highs. Our academic supports, you can see the dollars there that we have teachers mainly at the elementary level, that we use these to provide reading teachers for schools that do not qualify for title, as Title I schools. So it allows all of our students across the district to have access to qualified reading teachers. We do the same thing at the secondary program as well with students that are struggling, and then that also assists in paying for a summer reading program at the elementary We have a credit recovery skills program, which is kind of our Echos program, our after school program that serves both junior highs, and you can see that we use the dollars there to provide a site coordinator at each of the junior highs, as well as our secondary staff that helps run those programs during the course of the year, and then any, just some supplies that they have during the course of the year. Our juvenile court services liaison, that's something that we've had in place for a number of years to help serve students that are at risk and maybe being served by the juvenile court system, that we can track those as well. We've reduced that number over the past few years, it serves primarily the junior highs for that particular program. Our school resource officer, of course, is Zach Ledege, he's employed by the Cedar Falls Police Department, but we contract with the city for his services. He is a full-time employee that serves all of our school district as a resource officer, and it's been a great, great partnership with the Cedar Falls Police to have him in place. And then finally, our student services supports, again, that provides additional academic support after school and on Saturdays for our junior high and high school programs, and we have staff that we are able to pay to help students on those particular times. So if you can kind of look at what our total budget is, and then what our at-risk funding would be, is a part of that, and then we do have a small amount of carryover from this past year that we will apply towards next year, and then as law requires us, 25% of our total budget must come from our general fund, and that's just something that's required by the state for it. So you can see what our total request is for this year, 855,139, and that is the maximum allowable growth that we can apply for. Traditionally, over the last several years, we've been slightly below that, but this year, we are asking for the full amount, and you can see the calculations as to how that is calculated. This is tough to see, I know, I'll show it to you in a different format, but this is kind of a look past, or look back over the last five years of what our funding has been used for, and as you can see, we really haven't changed a whole lot during the course of the, those last five years as to how we use these dollars. The very bottom is tough to see right now, but that's what our tax rate is, just so you can see in the bottom right hand, you see that we, with this application, it's going to, it would result in an actual increase of a little over a penny per thousand. And Doug, do you want to respond to that?
I would want to comment that that estimate is based on this current year's assessed valuation, and if we have, I believe it's a 2.5% assessed valuation increase, it would be roughly the same rate, so it would be no change, or no rate increase. The district typically runs, historically, we've run in a greater percentage increase than 2 or 2.5% from year to year, so it's a possibility it'll actually be a decrease, but we won't know that until January.
And then two more slides that I'll pull up at this point in time, this is our funding history over the last several years. The red bar is our total budget, you can see it actually is going to go down slightly for next year, and then the requests that we get for the modified allowable growth actually increases slightly from a year ago. And then the last slide, you can kind of see is what our tax rate has been to help support our modified allowable growth for dropout prevention, and you can see it's been pretty consistent over the number of years that, as far as our tax asking for this, this funding for these programs. And that's about it, so I'll entertain any questions that you might have, or anything that you might have with regards to the dollars piece, I'll turn it over to Doug.
I would throw out a caveat to this too, we have a graduation rate of about 98%, we know first and foremost, that starts with our parents and our families and the support that they have in place, but a lot of the programs that we just talked about are those supports that are, that start in kindergarten and go all the way through sometimes seniors or student senior year. And we really take a lot of pride with student by student, skill by skill, ensuring all kids have supports. We meet them where they're at so they have the success later on within their academic careers, and I think a lot of those programs really give testament to what's in place.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the dropout prevention modified allowable growth application?
I'm sorry, Joyce, could I ask another question about that? Dan, do we identify the students in need first and then work from there, or do we, or do we work with the funding first, see who we can, see how much we can afford to do?
No, we, there's a, there's a set of criteria that students have to qualify to be classified as meeting an at-risk or a dropout, a potential dropout, and so those are, those are, you know, we identify those students up front and have a pretty good understanding of who those students are, and then be able to provide the services that we can.
So generally, students wouldn't transition much in and out of these, although I would imagine there are some that we feel don't.
Well, the goal is that you'd always, you know, have a student that might be at risk, no longer be at risk, or a potential dropout, no longer be a potential dropout, but, but, you know, a lot of times, those numbers don't change from year to year. Fortunately, we don't exclude students just because we don't maybe not have all of the funding that's in place for it, we continue to serve the students best we can.
Okay.
I have two more, two more questions, just to double check. Our mental health funding, that is for any student, correct? And I know we've talked about this before, that we have two on, we're paying for two staff. When do you see, is that, is that covering our need, or is that something that?
That's a big question, you know, the answer is, we could always use more supports because we want to make sure that we have enough wraparound services for kids, that if they struggle, that they can have that immediacy of help. Right now, we have funding for two, our hope is that we continue to increase that and kind of leverage the amount of time necessary to support our kids that might need some mental health supports. I would say that that is certainly an area of focus that we have, as well as several districts across the state and across the country have, is how do we continue to support those students that have those mental health challenges and/or needs that might be present one day, might not be there the next day, but we want to make sure that the supports are there every day for all kids.
And then, you mentioned the juvenile court liaison, and did you say that that's for the junior high, or did I miss?
He serves mainly the junior high and working with those students that are not coming to school, or that are part of a juvenile court assignment, some of those students are high school students as well, but he's mainly housed with the two junior highs.
Okay.
Can I ask one question, because there are only two counselors, are the, are the teachers getting any training on identifying or working with students in their own classrooms and helping to make up for the fact that there aren't many counselors at this point?
Yeah, we're working with our staff to be able to identify students that potentially might have some mental health needs, and then there's a referral process that they can put in place so they can get the counseling that they need. I know in, in, in... I know in, in the most recent report I got, I think we currently have roughly 75 students that just the two counselors are officially working with, and that's, you know, not enough. And so like Andy said, that we could always use additional supports in that area, just as every, across the state, where we struggle with the mental health concerns that we have. And so, you know, we continue to try to work with our students and families through our own counselors, as well as the mental health counselors.
And I'd be remiss without saying, we typically will have our own school counselors that are trained in some of those mental health strategies. We do have classroom teachers as well, but when we talk about these two counselors that are paid for out of the dropout, modified, or modified allowable growth, those are mental health child counselors that really focus on students that have mental health needs. So we have multiple other school counselors in our buildings and across our district, but when we say two that are funded here, these are mental health child counselors.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the dropout prevention modified allowable growth application?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for modified supplemental amount of $855,139 for at-risk and dropout students for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item J, approval of the 2017-2018 Board of Education Goals.
Yes, and did not create a slide regarding this, but there's a document in each of the board documentation, the board packets, as well as online, that goes through the recommended Board of Education Goals. And we're a little out of sync with our normal cycle on this. We have three new board members, and the decision was made, knowing that we'd have three new board members, to wait on the board goals. Typically, these would have some discussion in July or August, and we kind of go through that process, especially after we created and layered all of our classroom goals, our building goals, our administrative goals, and then put those on top of our board goals and the superintendent goals. So we're a little bit out of cycle on this, and that's why we have a little lateness to this. I know as we talked within our work session about IASB and some of the visioning and mission statements that we know are in place, we try to build everything onto three kind of goal areas, and that kind of fits into our, in fact, our only board policy in the 100 section that really focuses in on what is our overarching philosophy educationally, and what are we trying to do to impact students as we prepare them for their next either college experience, career experience, but certainly life experiences. So we build those into those three different areas. Student achievement, which we'll see within goal area number one, and all goals across our district are modified and built the same way. The second goal area is culture and climate, because we know it's extremely important to have that whole systems approach and kind of holistic approach to educating students. Then finally, goal number three is our professional learning communities, our collaborative teams, and our collaborative culture. I think what we heard and what we learned about at ISAB, especially when we learned from the featured speaker, Michael Follin, was you need to have that systemness and that collaborative culture to be able to get anything done, and our PLCs is kind of our system approach to what do we do for our curriculum? How do we make sure that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum? And what do we do to support students that might not know the material or already know the material so we can adjust accordingly? And all of our levels of goals are, have a PLC goal as well. So as we met as a committee, it was Jeff Hasman, Joyce Coyle, and myself that met with, on the Board of Education Goals. We are recommending the goals underneath student achievement, number one, to continue to focus and learn more about the CAPS program. We think that's important and have some presentations that will come up with our Center for Advanced Professional Studies and some of the changes and opportunities that are associated with that program. We had down a second goal underneath that student achievement bullet to really continue to focus on benchmarking. How do we kind of, lack of a better word, dipstick against other high-achieving districts across the Midwest? Because we want to make sure that we are always improving. A lot of times we'll say we kind of benchmark against ourselves, but we also want to make sure that we're watching and looking and having that metric against other high-achieving districts. We talked about how we would do that, and we started to try to narrow down that we'd visit six high-achieving districts, three of them in the state, three of them outside the state, at least that many, so we could start looking at what are they doing, how are they implementing, and what are those best practices that they have created and started within their districts? Some of the work that we've done over the last four to five years have been due to the fact that we have gone out and looked at different districts to find out what are those best practices. The third bullet underneath that second subset goal of benchmarking actually is another full subset of goal underneath student achievement, so that should be moved over to the left. I just noticed that before the meeting, but we have a five-year technology plan that is sunsetting this year. We've been working closely with our building instructional technology leaders. We've been working with several different groups to kind of recharge and reinvent what that technology view is going to look like over the next five years, and we'll be bringing that for a presentation and then future approval to the board, but we know that's such an important component of student learning, student achievement. And then finally, underneath student achievement, we had down continuing to talk about best practices, student grading, magnet schools, project-based learning, and some of those other components throughout the year. Goal two, again, which is culture and climate, we had down model learning. We had down participate in a book study centered on grading. We thought that was important, since that's a topic of conversation across our district. This was down from last year as well, and I think at a work session Jeff had said we had a goal that we didn't do great. This is another goal we didn't do, or a subset goal we didn't do great on. There's interest, but just lack of timing, we just didn't get it done. But we would love to have a joint meeting with our school board, the city council, see a few board of directors, and just jointly talk about future growth, what's happening with each of the entities, so we can have a little bit more systemness even within our Cedar Falls Community School, or Cedar Falls Community, because we're all here for the best interest of our community, and we want to make sure that we're working collectively for that right vision. We had down then also, and this was something that we had quite a bit of discussion on, or at least conversation on within the subcommittee, but participate in an episode of either parent university or current subclose with, with board members to be able to talk about what does it mean to be a board member? What is the roles and responsibilities? Excuse me. What are some of the components that go into being a productive board member of a growing school district? And I think that would be great insight to share with community members. And then the third goal area, again, professional learning communities, something that as we build our collective capacity, we head down attending PTO and PTA meetings to be able to provide information, but and then also garner feedback from our PTO and PTAs and in our leadership groups within our buildings. Those are our parent organizations, and those are always really interesting discussions. We typically kind of benchmark 20 minutes. Sometimes they go for an hour or longer, just because there's always great discussion and dialogue and conversation. And then we also head down to build that collective capacity and to be able to understand the work that's occurring within our collaborative teams within our buildings. We are working to set up a Google Doc on visits to the schools, both during regular school time, but PLC time, but also professional development, staff training time, so the board can see the ongoing work that's occurring.
Questions about the goals, conversations about the goals, thoughts?
I have a couple of questions. Did I understand you correct? Andy, you said typically in the summertime, there's a planning process that the full board is involved in to develop these goals?
Typically, what will happen is, we will get together, we'll, we'll have our June retreat, and you'll hear the summary of the buildings, and then what their goals are going to look like for the upcoming school year, as they have worked with their teams to finalize their previous goals and to build their collective goals for the upcoming school year. Then we will start to kind of have that discussion in July, sometimes in August, and we'll go through a fairly similar process. We'll have the discussion, we'll ask people for volunteers to serve on committees so we can bring back a framework for the full board, typically with, with a kind of like this, dialogue discussion, and what works, what doesn't work, and what seems to be in the best process for the school.
Okay. I was just, in the work session we had before this meeting where we were discussing the ISB convention that we went to, I brought up the fact that I had been reading the board member handbook after the convention, and had learned a lot about ISB's recommendations for the standards of effective school boards, and one of those involving developing a shared vision as a board altogether, and then, and then having goals that you're going to work on kind of grow out of that process and then be directly aligned to the vision that you developed altogether. So with that being something that ISB stresses is very important, I just, I thought it was worthwhile for us to have a discussion about that. I, as a new board member, you know, obviously you haven't been involved in any of these processes yet, and want to, you know, state that upfront, that maybe things have happened before I came on, and maybe next year there will be a process to, to do this, but it's just something that I would be, be interested in, is, you know, a shared process where we all kind of talk about these things, and maybe a higher-level vision, you know, for the board before the goals are developed, the individual goals for that year.
And I think that's something we can certainly continue to revamp and work on. I think it's, you know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg concept, too. We want to make sure that the board has that vision, that understanding of the direction that we are continuing to move as a district, as we look at those collaborative ventures and high levels of learning and achievement, but we also want to make sure that that aligns with what our, as we look at collective capacity, and one of the things that we heard, and we use quite a bit within our, our school district, is what are effect sizes? What are those right strategies and implementation? You have to have that collective capacity and the collective will of the system when we look at direction and movement, and I've seen systems, too, where sometimes every year a group or a certain, could just be a top-down philosophy that says, this is our vision this year, well, next year this is our vision. We've got to continue to stay on what does work and what is that consistent components to add to that collective efficacy, and we know as we build our goals in those three areas, those are the three key cornerstones. But I think it's, it's important for board members to continue, and if you aren't fully aware of maybe what our mission is, and the district's never created really a vision statement, we have that 100.1 board policy that really focuses in on what is it that we believe philosophically that all kids need to have, be able to obtain and achieve? And we've always built everything off of that, and basically it's our mantra, every student, every day, or skill by skill, student by student, but I think it's important to always come back to that. Do we collectively believe all students can learn? Do we collectively believe we can impact and change the trajectory of students for the better? And I think everybody around the table would say yes, and Follin would say that's the moral imperative that you have to set first and foremost as a collective institution, and I think everybody would say, yes, we have those impacts, and all kids can learn, and all kids can learn at high levels. They will rise to your lowest level of expectations, it's a matter of getting there. Joyce and Jeff heard, I've always been a Follin fanatic, and I, and I love his work, so I would, could talk about that for hours, and I won't. But yes, I agree. We need to probably do more of that, which we have not revisited or visited as a, as a full board.
And, and the timing is going to be changing, which is always going to put new board members at a, if you want to use the word loss, right? So in two years, the timing of the election, so next, in two years, it's going to be in November. I mean, goals will be set, and it will be just a transition point, and I'm not sure, I mean, we can't really control any of that. I mean, that's being dictated to us, so we can't push, push things back to wait for that either.
We can't.
I think if I could just, I think what would help, and some of this is, you know, and it's great having new board members on, because so many of us, I mean, we really had a, a very stable, not that it's unstable, but a very stable board where there was only one or two people at one point, so having so many new people is great. I think what would help, so for those of us that have been here, these goals are really a continuation of work. I mean, PLC work started how many years ago? And to give a history of where we started with PLCs and maybe how, you know, where we've progressed to, it might be worth a work session to just kind of briefly go over these with our new board members, and so we can explain to them why we set these as goals in the beginning, where we are with CAPS. We're really just a few years into CAPS, and why it's important that remains a good board goal for now as we transition into our new board. So I think that might be worth another work session, just to briefly give a history of why we've done these, or why we felt these things were important, so that, you know, they're not just saying, oh, I mean, we weren't involved in this at all, and it would feel a little discomforting, or like you're not advancing on the learning curve without any of that background, so.
And we, we try to do that over time, just as we kind of rolled out and talked about our ten-year PEPOL plan, you know, two meetings ago, and some of the other components. We want to onboard everybody as quick as we can, but we also know that there's going to just be some time and some space gaps in there as well. And as I reflect back, and I think it's important from, you know, what Eric said, you know, we, the last time we went back to our educational philosophy, the 100.1, I know we had a lot of good conversations, and I remember going through the policy committee first and having that discussion as a full board on what some of those bullet points should be. Every year, we should probably come back to that philosophy. Is this still our philosophy and the direction that we move as a district? And, you know, what are those essential skills and complex thinkers and skilled utilizers of technology, which was one of the changes that we made a year or a year and a half ago, and what does that look like, and are we all on the same page with what that, those key cornerstones are for the educational institution of Cedar Falls Schools?
So my suggestion would be then is to maybe have a work session just around that, that policy, and to sit down and look at it and have a conversation, and see if our board goals, still have the conversation about where we are and how we came to fruition with these board goals in relationship to this policy.
Yes, I would recommend probably tying that into our board admin retreat in June. I think that would be a good time to come back and revisit that, based on just the work and the information that we get. That can sometimes be an overload morning, because you're talking seven buildings and the district with, with all the goals. They're all similar goals because they're based on student achievement, PLC, culture, climate, but they all vary slightly based on the data and the individual needs of the buildings and the departments that we all serve. So I think that'd be a good time to do that, as we then start dipsticking for what are the building blocks for us to continue to move forward with, how do we best serve students, and continue to steer the ship down the right pathway.
And that would effectively get at what I'm, what I'm asking about. You know, whether it's at the retreat or a separate work session, however we scheduled it, I thank you, and thank you, Jenny, for, you know, those comments, because that, that is kind of what I'm.
I mean, is, we are having a mid-year retreat, yes, in January?
We are.
Would there be an opportunity just to even do a brief, bringing them up to speed, you know, presentation?
I think so.
Could even be separate from the administrators' part if it needed to be, but.
This isn't meant to be demeaning, there's just so many areas to be able to, because there's so many different components of the work that we've been doing, that sometimes we just kind of continue to build upon those building blocks. You know, our goal and our hope would be to be able to have some discussion about what does it mean with our collaborative teams and our PLC process, and that was to be scheduled anyway, so I think that's important. The challenge is, we go deeper into each of these subset goals with CAPS. That could be another, you know, two-hour segment to talk about the history, the process, the, the work that was done to visit multiple districts, and be able to come up with a program that is a collaborative venture with our, our community to best serve kids. And there's, so there's so many different layers, I would need to get guidance from the board on which ones were priorities, so we could start having those conversations to bring everybody kind of to that same level of, of knowledge base.
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have a lot of time before our mid-year, but, but maybe we could, when we meet with you, Andy, prior to our next board meeting, Jeff and I can sit down and maybe. Jeff and I can sit down and maybe have a conversation with you on what that might look like at the mid-year. And if we can't do it, maybe during that mid-year time, we can set a goal, work session, a work session just to have a conversation around this, just to get it started. And then maybe it will be a work in progress until our retreat.
Well, the retreat on January 10th is our, is the retreat with our admin board. And I know we have some informational reports that are over a lot of these topics over the course of the year. Just because we knew it was important to kind of end date those as far as throughout the calendar year. So we could continue to have that capacity building for our board members. So I think CAPS is coming up in maybe February. We had a, the technology plan that we, we were hoping to have again here early spring as well as some other components. So there's always going to be a lot of informational gathering and trying to hopefully bring everybody up to speed. But like Jenny said, this is the first time we've really had three new board members sitting at the table for a long time in Cedar Falls.
Well, it helps to know that this is a continuum, right? That this is a process and it builds on itself and to revisit vision and, and, you know, what we believe as a board annually to align with those goals, it sounds like a good process.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're not entertaining a motion to table these goals, is that correct?
No, I think our goal, you know, again, we're, we're at November. So the board goals, I think it's really up to the board. I would recommend that these are pretty, they're, they're goals that have been building upon one another for multiple years. And I think they're continuation, I think Jenny summed that up pretty well. So I don't think there's anything in here that the board wouldn't support to move forward with as we look at collective capacity as well as direction of, of, as a district. As a superintendent, we're not to that one yet. These are things that we, and I, and the district have been working on now for multiple months. Just as we continue to continue down that path of support improvement and where we know we, we have to continue to move to make sure our students are achieving at high levels.
So again, back to what I'd said just a minute ago, that maybe when, when Andy and I and Jeff will meet, Jeff, the three of us will meet to review the agenda before our December meeting. So let's have a conversation about that and see what we can do to facilitate a deeper conversation. And still be able to move forward with our goals and then do what we need to do to make sure that we're listening to what Eric says. And to take some of that and be able to expand on that.
I think that's good.
Is that all right?
And Eric, you're asking the right questions.
Yep, exactly. Very good.
So I think it's, I think it's very good. I think you're bringing up a good point about, hey, you know, what is our common vision? And how does that translate into our goals and then, and then bubble down through? It's the right question.
Good, thank you.
So one, I, I agree with you, Andy, that there's nothing in these goals that I would disagree with. These are, yeah, great goals. I did have one question as a point of clarification that, you know, a huge issue, if you want to call it that, item that we're working on is a new high school. And that isn't explicit in these goals anywhere. So in a conversation I had with, with Joyce earlier, she said that she thought it was kind of implied in the second bullet, I believe. Is that right Joyce, under?
I, I feel that we've talked about it within our benchmarking, that even though we're looking at high achieving school districts, we're also looking at what does that look like in a building? What's the facility look like to create the environment of a high achieving high school? And so for me personally, I see that going hand in hand as we go out and visit other school districts.
I think so too, and I think that can be a standalone goal underneath probably. And I'd either put it underneath culture and climate or student achievement because it could fit underneath both of them. Underneath the superintendent goals, we have one that is to finalize creation of a new high school facility planning framework. Be able to put that framework into place. I think the board is always an important part in that and will be involved with that process. But I think we need to get that component, the dynamics completed so we can move forward in the right way collectively. So I, I think it's important for the board to have that down because you're going to be involved with that framework. I think a lot of the onus probably falls down on my shoulders immediately just to be able to get that framework, framework put together. To be able to come for a good dialogue with the board on what that could look like, should look like, and then move forward with that for our community.
So how would we like to word that? Any suggestions?
I'm not sure how to word it, but I, I think the two people who spoke at our public, at the, at the.
Hearing?
Hearing tonight. It's important that our community understand that every decision we're making, when we're having to make investments like this is, I mean, not with a reluctance, but with the understanding that, you know, we want to be as most fiscally responsible as we can be knowing that we have a major investment coming. So if there's some way to make sure that the public does understand that we are keeping that in mind, it is on our agenda. Just to address concerns like that. Because I think those are valid questions that we're going to have as we continue to have to maintain our current facility so that we are providing a safe and productive place for both our staff and students. So any place we can work to allay those fears or make sure that people understand and trust that we are being the best fiscal stewards of their tax dollars is worth it. Again, I don't know how you word that, but I think that's worth some consideration.
Well, and to follow up with that, to make the point always too, that we're serving the students that are there currently while also planning for serving the students of the future. So the, the students who are attending the high school right now deserve the best facilities that we can possibly give to them under the current circumstances situation. So maybe a broader facilities bullet that, that addresses current and future needs.
So if you're, I don't know if you have a recommendation, Eric, it looked like you had some notes.
I studied engineering and math.
I would put down simply to, to kind of, it builds upon the other goals that we, we've talked about or had in the past. But simply working to, to create that, that facility plan for the high school that's, that's feasible and workable for the future.
And I'll wordsmith that just a little bit and say, create a community vision for the need of, of, for the construction of a new high school. But I think a community, our, our challenge is to, is, we're all passionate, of course. Otherwise we wouldn't be on the school board as far as education and the importance of it. But, but the challenge is creating a community vision that they can put their wallets behind.
Yep. And I would put that underneath probably culture and climate because I think that's a cultural component that we have to continue to have that dialogue on the, on the why. Why is this important? Why is this needed? And it's, I think, a climate component as we look at not only economic development, but sustainability and growth for our entire community as we look at the future.
And the only comment I'd make on that, Andy, is, and it's fine if we put it there, like in looking at your goals, I was actually going to suggest moving under culture and climate. You had finalized creation of the facility planning framework for a new high school and the technology plan. I mean, when I think about culture and climate, I would move those under student achievement. Culture and climate to me is more kind of about parent engagement, you know, I mean, the things you already had under there. So I guess I was, that's, was a suggestion I was going to make for yours. So I guess that would indicate some direction for the one we're talking about right now, but.
Yeah, I'm comfortable either way with that. You know, they, they fall into both buckets when you look at student achievement and how do you impact and leverage with spaces? The, the right work that we need to have for students. But we understand that you, you can't have the right culture or the right climate if you don't have the spaces necessary. And without culture or climate, and a positive culture or climate, student achievement doesn't occur at the levels it should. So it's, it's kind of.
Six months, half dozen others, right?
It's really just where you place them. It's more the important, I agree, but it's, I think it's that work that needs to be done. Where, what's the work and the leverage and how we label them, I think is.
Right.
Can I suggest we not say specifically high school, but all facilities? Because we might be talking about a bus garage or a track or some of these other facilities. So maybe just leave it at generic facilities rather than specify the high school?
Is everybody shaking their head? I'm not seeing, okay, yeah.
I, I agree, the only part that I'd like to just highlight is the high school is our most acute need.
Right.
So I don't disagree because we do have bus, bus garage challenges and, and otherwise. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just, so I don't know, maybe if, maybe there's a, to support, create a community vision for the need for new facilities that support learning, especially a new high school?
I like that.
Okay.
Especially. You want that highlighted too?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy with a special.
Okay.
So I think we're at a crossroads where either I can go back and kind of continue to craft this and bring it back. Or if you're comfortable with that framework and the understanding behind the why and what, then we can approve that. But we can certainly table this and bring back at least these goals if you want me to, to wordsmith this.
Are you willing to approve it with that addition and the, the changes?
I think so.
I am, everybody, okay?
Could I ask one more question, not to belabor this whole thing too much? But just quickly, sorry, are we beyond the facilities thing now? Okay, the, the, you mentioned something, Andy, about, oh, it was the second bullet point under goal two, to participate in a joint meeting with city of Cedar Falls and CFU. And the way you described that sounded kind of like a strategic planning type session, you know, a really comprehensive one for the community. Just a little bit of clarification, it's not like a facilitated strategic planning session, is it?
Nope, no. And again, we'd have to post that and have that be a public meeting. But the intent, as we've talked about this over the course of the last multiple months, is to come together and talk about what do we see as those areas of growth and those areas of levers that we, we know each of those entities which are important to our community are seeing. You know, I'm not sure historically we've ever had the school board and the city council talk about, you know, as the city council looks five years out, what are they going to look at major projects and impacts for, for growth in our community? That's extremely important for us as a school district to, the utility, which is again, what probably the best in the state of Iowa. As they are planning for, you know, the next five years, it would be good just to have information from our standpoint to know what that looks like and where are they planning for growth and what is the work being done to ensure that growth? So we can understand in the future where, what placement should be and the impacts it has on our schoolchildren. And I think it's important for us to be able to talk about what we think are those big rocks that we have on the upcoming horizon that we know are important, but also those educational changes as we look at supporting all the learning across Cedar Falls.
So sharing of information.
Okay, yep, it's a dialogue, it's open dialogue. Because I think it's important too for our school board members and city council members, as well as the board of trustees, to be able to see and know one another and be able to have that dialogue. It's relationship building as well.
I like it, yeah.
And also a good opportunity to identify partnership, partnerships, which is another thing that the community members brought up earlier tonight, so.
There's always that aha, every time we have a conversation with some of our leaders where we just realize we didn't know that was something you're working on. Let's talk and see if there's a way we can synergize.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve our board goals with the additions to them? So moved. It's been moved by Jeff, seconded by Jenny. Sorry Jenny.
Okay.
Any other further?
Jeff and me, Jeff first did it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great conversation, great discussion tonight, thank you. Okay, moving on to superintendent goals.
Yes, and I'll try to go through these maybe with a little bit more expediency. But similar focus, student achievement, PLC, culture and climates. Head down, we know we're going to continue to enhance and expand our CAPS program with additional strands. We're looking at medical strand for next school year. We want to continue to expand some of the three components and strains that we currently have in place as we, we look to having more students involved with that as well. Head down again, exploring for student achievement, those, those deeper learning opportunities. We, we know learning-based grading is important work as we continue to build within our collaborative teams. And our PLC framework is the, the end goal to make sure that students are learning and being assessed based on their essential learning concepts and, and kind of the power standards within each of our areas so we can showcase their learning. But personalized learning as well as exploration of project approaches and, and magnet school explorations and options with that. One of the things that we're, we're excited about to continue to explore and enhance is computer science opportunities for, for students. How that's going to continue to expand and grow across our district for all kids as well as just other STEM opportunities. Underneath PLCs and professional learning community, now this is as a superintendent, my, my collaborative teams and my collaborative growth. I'm really deeply engaged with multiple groups across the state, executive leaders. It's a group of superintendents that helps guide some of the professional development and learning for superintendents across the state. Iowa Association of School Boards Advisory Board, Chamber Alliance Boards, statewide conference planning boards for our school administrators of Iowa. So there's a lot of groups and components I'm really glad to be involved with. It just helps refine my overall thinking and focus. And then also undertaking with the admin council, I didn't put down the board one because that's already part of the board goal with the book study. But what we do is with the admin council is really focus on some article reflection and discussion to really enhance individual learning and philosophy and direction as well as book studies and then just the implementation of, of best strategies. And where do we see ourselves going and how do we implement the right levers as we, we look to the future? And then underneath culture and climate, the high school facility planning framework, social media I continue to try to work on. I have several nudges from individuals that helped me try to get better on that every single day. Janelle's not listening, but I try to really work to showcase the great, the great things that are going on every single day in our, in our buildings and our classrooms. We did our first parent university here about a, three weeks ago, a month ago, I don't recall, offhand, but I thought that went extremely well. We want to continue to enhance that and grow that. And then continue to revamp and renew and review our partners in education, working with our, our community businesses. And finally, that technology plan is, is going to be important. Technology is a tool, but it's an important tool in this day and age to really allow students to showcase their learning and to dig deeper into their learning.
Questions or comments regarding Dr. Patey's goals? We've talked about coming back mid-year, we do a mid-year evaluation and just really it's just to, just to touch base, to see where he is on the goals. Usually we try to do that in January. I'm thinking it's going to happen sometime in February just because this is the end of November. But just know that we will do that. And let's see, two board members were a part of this. Sasha and Susie.
Correct. Really good discussion.
Do you have anything you'd like to share? Any others, comments, questions regarding Dr. Patey's goals? Do I have a motion to approve those goals?
So moved.
Thank you Jeff, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Yep, just a couple of different items. December 6th, 4:15, we have the legislator meeting at Pete Junior High. December 11th is our next board meeting. The informational report that night is going to be learning-based grading. We moved that up, which was due in February, but we moved that up just with the, the timing and moved science back to February. Knowing that that doesn't necessarily necessitate, necessitate kind of a timing or doesn't need to be as soon as the learning-based grading. January 8th would be the, the first board meeting in January. We do not have a second board meeting in December, so there's only one board meeting in December, which is the 11th. Then January 10th, we have the board admin retreat and we'll send that agenda out to everybody. That starts. That starts at 9:30 in the morning and each of our buildings will go through a short presentation, our district will go through a presentation. And I'll talk to Joyce and Jeff about some of the other components, but I think it'd be important to highlight just that PLC framework concept, history and all the different components of, of what that means and why it's a important driver and actually one of Follin's drivers as far as collaborative ventures and collaborative teams during the work collectively.
Any other questions regarding Andy's superintendent's report?
Just a request, when, who, who's going to do the learning-based grading? Do you know yet who's going to bring that to us?
We, well, we'll have a, actually a couple of different components on it. We are going to have some video components that we're putting together and we're breaking that into a, kind of a shorter series of videos that people can view and tune into, but we'll also have some, some staff members that'll be here to help present that. Our hope is to be able to have some student voices, but we're not sure if we're going to be able to get that accomplished because some of our students are our biggest advocates when they talk about, we really want to be assessed and our, our learning, our grading focused on what we've learned and what we can show based on those power standards.
And even if you had, I think, some teachers who have been through, you know, we have teachers piloting this who could speak personally to what they've seen as the differences are. And I'm sure out there, there has to be, because this is not something new, lots of places are doing it across the country and in Iowa. So for our parents who are concerned, I'm sure there are even the myths about this kind of grading that are concerns to people, that if we can address those, I think this is a great opportunity to be able to dispel some of those and hopefully bring some concern away from parents. You know, I, I know some of the comments I've heard, I think what parents don't understand is they, they advocate for like students competing with each other rather than just being successful on their own merits. And I think hopefully that's something that maybe through this presentation, we can educate people a little better on what this means and we shouldn't be putting our students at competition with, with each other. If they've all mastered it by the end, it shouldn't matter when they mastered it. The, the important part is that they mastered it. So I hope that maybe this is an opportunity for us to educate our, our parents as well as to the importance and the benefits that this brings to all of our students, not just those who do school really well.
And one of the board goals that we approved tonight was to have a book study on grading. And I think this is one of those important transitions to move forward with as far as what that does. And in this one, this does a really nice job and it's by a practitioner that, that wrote this book who was kind of a traditionalist that moved forward after fully understanding how important assessments are to tie into what students should know, not necessarily just on maybe behaviors or response to behaviors. And this goes through a lot of those myths and, and talks about those myths in great detail. And it's a very practical, I think, very common sense approach and language that everybody can certainly understand and analogies that all of us could make that equate back to what everybody has lived. So that's, it's a, it's a very good book.
Great, perfect timing.
Very good timing.
All right. Under item M on the agenda, board members, questions, comments or concerns? I'll bring it up. Tomorrow's Giving Tuesday.
Yes, yes it is.
Just remember, I know that we have an opportunity to support the foundation. I think the board has been asked to give regarding our breakfast and I bet if we gave on Tuesday, that could be accounted for our Giving Tuesday.
Absolutely.
All right. So just, just a plug for the foundation, so. Anyway, any other questions or comments to come before the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and do I have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.